Good evening. It's Thursday, July 24, 2025, and I'd like to welcome you to the meeting of the South Brunswick Board of Education and to call the meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, Statement of Advanced Notice. The New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act, NJSA 10-4-6, also known as the Sunshine Law, was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advanced notice of and to attend the meetings of the public bodies at which any business affecting the interests is discussed or acted upon. The primary purpose is for board members to discuss and vote on board business. In accordance with the provision of this act, the Board Secretary has caused notice to this meeting forty-eight hours prior, including date, time, and location, to be posted in the South Brunswick Public Library and Board Office, filed with the Township Clerk, and communicated to the Home News and Star Ledger. It is also posted on our website. Roll call, Mr. Palowski.
Julie Ferrara, Ms. Alicia Khan, Mr. Raja Krishnan.
Present.
Mr. Mike Mitchell.
Present.
Dr. Smithe Raj, Mr. Rajesh Shoney.
Here.
Mrs. Deepakarthik.
Present.
Mrs. Laura Hernandez.
Here.
We have a forum.
Okay, great. Now, I would like to have an approval of the agenda. Can I have a motion to approve? Mr. Mitchell, second, Ms. Alicia Khan. All in favor? Now, I need approval of the board minutes, approval of May 22, 2025 executive and board minutes, and approval of January, oh, I'm sorry, June 4, 2025 executive and board minutes. Ms. Julie Ferrara and Ms. Alicia Khan.
Sure. The minutes that we have, is it common to have scant details, or we do elaborate the topics that were discussed in the executive sessions?
So, if we look back on the last six months, it's all pretty, we do it exactly the same way. Now, if when we go forward, if we want to add more detail, I think that's just fine. But we have followed suit for a while like this.
Okay.
Okay?
Good.
Any other questions?
I'm good.
Okay, so then, Ms. Ferrara and Ms. Khan.
Yeah, so I'd like to, I won't be voting on the executive session, minutes of the meeting for June 4. I don't agree with the format in which they are present, so I will not be voting on that.
Okay. You got that, Dave?
Yep.
Okay. Okay, um, so next up is our interviews for the board vacancy.
Yeah, minutes approved.
Minutes are approved.
Yep.
Mr. Palowski, this would be you.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, we're here this evening in public session to interview candidates for an open vacancy on the Board of Education. So, this evening, we have five candidates that will come in for about a twenty-minute interview. We have three questions that are all in your red folder. In your red folder that I provided, you'll see the names of the five candidates. Each candidate has a packet. You have a couple pieces of paper. You're able to take notes. I am going to ask that you shut down computers for this portion of the meeting, only because we want to keep notes and handwritten notes on paper, and we want to keep our communication amongst ourselves during this meeting amongst ourselves. We don't want to send out any questions or any kind of information to anybody in the public during this part of the meeting. Also, remember that tech, tech object, or phones and computers, they are operable, and this is a public meeting, so that the information could be operable if you are open computer and sending information out during this portion of the meeting. So, the process is going to move like so. We have five candidates. I have a person in the room upstairs that's sitting with them now. I will call our first candidate in in approximately a few minutes. We'll have, yep, we'll have twenty minutes. I will answer the three, or I will ask the three questions. There's no opportunity for follow-ups. We're taking notes. You're taking your, taking your notes of each candidate's response. We are going to move into an executive session once our last candidate is interviewed. In that executive session, we will deliberate. We'll have conversations. We will talk about the needs of the board. We will not be taking straw polls. We will not be taking any type of polling information with regards to who our candidate would be. That happens in public session. So, after the executive session, we will move back into public session. We will take nominations, just like we take nominations for presidency and vice presidency. We'll take a nomination. We'll have a first. We'll have a second. Then, we have discussion. This is where you have the opportunity as board members to show support for a particular candidate that we have a nomination for. We will take a roll call vote. The first person that reaches the majority of the, of the board in a roll call vote will win that seat. Let's be clear. You need the votes, the roll call votes. You need the majority of the board that's here present to win the seat. So, if we rush to nominate five, six people, all those people in order of nomination will have a roll call vote and discussion, if that makes sense. So, let's, if there are any questions on that process, we'll go through that process twice. If we go through that process and we cannot agree on a candidate, then we are considered not able to elect a candidate, and then it moves to the county superintendent, and the county superintendent will appoint a candidate. Okay? Question, Rajesh.
Just the majority of the roll call vote of, any of the five candidates just wins, right?
Correct.
Perfect.
The first one to attain a roll call, a majority of the roll call, wins the seat.
Okay, but everybody gets the same round. So, in the first round, whoever gets the majority, no? She's nodding.
No, right?
No, yeah, no. You have to, you have to be nominated. You have to have a second. Then, we'll have an opportunity for discussion. People can voice, voice their support, and then we'll do a roll call vote for each person as they are nominated. The first person to get the majority wins the seat. The other nominations do not get.
So, so in other words, if the first person gets four votes, there is no second person.
There's no second person.
That's, that's the way it goes. It's not who gets the most votes, the first person that gets four.
Oh, so, so whoever is the first nominee candidate won, and they got five votes, it's done.
It's finished, correct.
And today, the, today, it's four votes today, because there's seven people.
Yep.
Man, it doesn't sound fair, right? I mean, or is this a process?
It's the process. This is the process. It's just the same as nominating for president, vice president.
But then, it would just become rush to nomination.
No, that, you can, you can put your person up for nomination and get a second, and they might not get the votes.
No, no, which is fine, but.
And then, the second person could get the votes. So, whoever nominates, that's, it's in nomination order.
I think his question is, let's assume, like, let's assume he nominates somebody, and that person gets four votes, and let's assume Mike nominates somebody, and that person gets five votes.
Yeah, he would never get a chance to nominate.
You never get a chance for that.
Exactly.
You won't know that.
I think what we do need to do, I think.
I think, I think it's, it should be the highest.
Yeah, but I think, but it's our policy.
I'm sorry, guys. You can't, you can't, you can't take votes on everybody.
Going forward.
It's the, it's the, the policy's clear. The first person to attain majority vote attains the seat.
That, like, we had, we, so, and remember, you should only be voting yes to one candidate. So, pick who you, in your brain, who you want, and only vote yes once. And, but I think going forward from here, we might want to discuss it during Policy Committee, looking at our policy.
No, but I, again, I may not agree with that, Laura. So, for example, let's just hypothetically say Mike nominated a one person. I said yes. He didn't make it through. Now, candidate two is nominated. I should be able to say yes again?
Yes.
No, but you just said you only can say yes to one person.
So, so.
Okay.
You do vote every time, but your vote could be a non-choice to vote, but you have the option to vote yes every time.
Yes or no, yeah.
Yes, you can vote every time.
But we, we really should readdress this policy going forward, because it really does have our hands a little bit tied, for sure. But it is what it is, so we got to follow it.
As I said, my concern is if somebody gets nominated and gets four votes, then as per this policy, that person gets.
The seat.
Yes.
Yes.
But if there was second nomination, we have a roll call, and that person gets, let's say, all the votes.
They won't.
They won't.
You're not taking.
Not taking votes on the second.
The reason, that is what I'm saying. That is the, that's the pitfall. We should have, we should go for the maximum votes, not the first nominee, not the first one that gets the majority.
Unfortunately, we can't change that tonight.
Yeah, I know that. I'm just, I'm just voicing my, my concern, that's all.
So, our first candidate this evening is Mr. Barry Nathanson. He should be coming in here shortly. I have extra pens, if anybody needs an extra pen. Good evening, Mr. Nathanson. How are you this evening?
Good evening. How are you, sir?
Good, thank you.
Well, Mr. Palowski, how's that?
Thank you for your interest in coming back and serving for us with, on the board. We have three questions for you this evening. We should take about fifteen, twenty minutes, and we'll move, we have five candidates that we're going to move through. We are going to have a decision this evening.
Very good. Thank you.
So, first question, how would you approach balancing the needs of students, staff, and taxpayers when making decisions about the district budget?
Well, it's, it's very important, when you do the budget, to think of all of those things. But the, the major part of the budget is you have to think of how we can best run the district. Finances change, have changed greatly from when I first got on until last year. Every superintendent had to beg and borrow kind of thing, and I think they've done an excellent job. So, the, the idea is to make sure our district is the heart of our thinking when we're doing our budgets.
Perfect. Thank you, sir. Our second question is, how would you ensure that your dis, that your decisions as a board member align with the district's mission and core values?
Well, so, the, the district and the core values have been there throughout the years. You know, I got to learn from some of the legendary board members of all time, and we always put what the district is at a whole, and we worked as a body of the whole, not as individuals.
Right. Thank you. Last question for you this evening. What do you see as the most significant challenges currently facing South Brunswick schools, and how would you contribute to addressing them?
Well, so, I've been to every meeting this year, after last year when I lost, okay, or didn't come back. I think the, the challenge is to make sure this board starts thinking as one and working together, okay? And I think being someone, probably the only one that has worked with almost everyone here, I think I can do that. That, that's a challenge, because there is no change as to, there are no Christmas money this year, and the state has not offered anything but, okay, go over the budget, go above the cap, you know, and that, that's not the way to function. So, I think I offer to bring all that together and bring the board together.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Nathanson.
That's it.
Appreciate your time.
Okay.
Everything's coming down. Yeah, it is. Everybody's busy writing. Everybody's busy writing. Good evening, Dr. Parker.
Good evening.
We thank you for your interest in serving on the South Brunswick Board of Education. We have three quick questions for you this evening.
Okay.
And should take, you know, fifteen, ten, fifteen, twenty minutes, and we'll just get right into it, okay?
All right.
So, our first question for you this evening is, how would you approach balancing the needs of students, staff, and taxpayers when making decisions about the district budget?
Well, it's, it's our role as the board is to get information basically from this superintendent. It's not our particular role to go and investigate in schools. We can talk to community members. We can talk to the superintendent. But whenever you, you do that, it's based on the superintendent is going to give you information and, or the business administrator information about how the budget is formed and why it's formed, and if you want to consider that. You can also look at what the community is saying about what they think they need or don't need. But you look at that information, and you look at what the budget is, you know what the money is available, and you sometimes have to make tough decisions about what, what is appropriate and what isn't appropriate, based on what the community is looking for. That's the important part. And the superintendent is the chief educator, so he knows the educational part of what's needed by the students, and you have to put those things kind of together to decide on the budget, and what should go in and what shouldn't go in. But it's really, as I said, the superintendent is the educator, the chief educator, who gives you the information, and you focus that and filter it with what you hear from the community, and try to make sure how those, make sure those kind of line up, because you're there representing the community. So, it's important to, you know, make sure you're the community's voice in those discussions.
Thank you. Second question, how would you ensure that your decisions as a board member align with the district's mission and core values?
First, you have to know the mission and the core values, and you have to understand those. And then, when you look at decisions, you take that into account when you make a decision. Is this, is this thing we're asking to vote on, is it in line with our goals, with our mission, with our, you know, with what we think is right for the children of South Brunswick? You need to take into account every child in South Brunswick, and make sure their needs are met, that they are well-educated. That's one of our roles on a board, is to ensure the children are well-educated. But we have to do that in line with, you have to understand the district's missions, the district's goals, the district's, all of those things, to try and look at that and see, does this decision align with those elements?
Perfect. Last question this evening, what do you see as the most significant challenges currently facing South Brunswick schools, and how would you contribute to addressing them?
Well, obviously, the biggest challenge in most schools all the time is budget. I know South Brunswick has been hit hard recently in trying to make budget and still get the, the programs that we need to ensure that we educate our children. It's always been difficult. That's generally the biggest thing that boards face, is this, in this state, the way education is funded falls on the back of the community members. We're a community that has lots of elderly people. We have lots of people who can afford taxes, some who can't. How do you, and then, we're limited as to what we can raise. And so, how do you do all of that and still get the funds you need to ensure that we're educating our children properly?
Perfect. All righty, sir. We thank you for your interest in serving the South Brunswick Board of Education. We will be making a decision this evening.
All right. Thank you for the opportunity.
Sing a song.
Good evening. How are you?
Hi, how are you?
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Miriam.
Hey, Miriam. I want to thank you for your interest in serving the South Brunswick Board of Education as a board member. So, we have three questions for you this evening.
Absolutely.
Take fifteen, twenty minutes, no more than, to get an understanding. So, we're going to jump right in. We're just asking the same three questions of every, every board candidate. So, our first question is, how would you approach balancing the needs of students, staff, and taxpayers when making decisions about the district budget?
I think it's important to understand those needs. I think it's important to understand your demographics and understand the economical impact of the decisions that you are making, and what is in for the best interest for that district's students and taxpayers.
Great. Okay. How would you ensure, you tell me if you're, you ready for the second question?
Yes, sir.
You're right at it. Okay. How would you ensure that your decisions as a board member align with the district's mission and core values?
I think given the opportunity to fully, you know, understand the perspective of the board, the collaboration piece, learning about the responsibilities, is a big component to that.
Well, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
We have a, we will be making a decision this evening, but thank you.
I appreciate the time. Thank you for hearing me out and consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Yeah, I gave them, I gave them. some of our candidates, and...
If I'm not here yet. It's all about...
Only the...
It just matters if Sujad is here, right?
No. Sujad is not here.
Is the other person here?
No. Only those three are here. But I gave them times to attend because I thought we were going to have, I thought this was going to take a little bit longer than five minutes.
Do you want to do, can they modify the agenda and do any business?
Josh, louder.
He wants to switch the order.
Yeah, I think we can switch the order, so we do them.
We have to modify the agenda. Someone has to make a motion to modify. So let's give one second. Let's see if, Dave, is that something we can do?
Yeah, we can make a motion to modify the agenda.
How do you want to modify it?
That's what I'm looking to see. We can do, we can do the report of the president and report of the superintendent. And then, and then by then, the two candidates should be here. Give you about 30 minutes, 15 minutes each.
Do you prefer to do... The presentation, I can't really get started.
Oh, how about Ken, Ken Peet's presentation? How long was that?
It's P. Jeff Roman. I don't think he's here yet, but...
Oh, right.
I wouldn't do that yet.
I don't have a choice, do we?
Let me consent agenda, I could do.
I have somebody walking in.
Oh, wait, one second.
Oh, someone's here.
Yeah, three to just, three to just send it out.
We're good.
Hello there.
I am Balaguru, just on time. I didn't know that things got expedited. Can I put my phone on a mute in the meanwhile, please?
Sure. Yes, sir. We want to thank you for coming in and coming right to the hot seat.
It's always a pleasure.
Yep. We have, thank you for your interest in serving the South Brunswick Board of Education as a board member for our vacancy. This evening, we have three questions that we're asking of all of the board members or the candidates. We'll ask the three questions, and we are going to deliberate to an executive session, come back out and make nominations, and hopefully put somebody in the seat this evening.
Sure.
To start at our next board meeting. So, three questions. First question, how would you approach balancing the needs of students, staff, and taxpayers when making decisions about the district budget?
From my prior experience of last 40-plus years, I have been running multiple companies. I have started four or five companies. I've had over thousands of employees working with me in contracts and full-time over the last 25 years. So there, I have honed my skills in terms of managing budgets, finances, and of course, the diverse needs of all my people. So that brings me to the situation of where am I with different children? Over the last 40-plus years that I've been working, I have dealt with hundreds of youngsters, I would say thousands of youngsters, whom I have mentored, guided, and also put them on their career. More of, more than that, in my community, I used to run a chess club where most of the kids used to come and learn from me. I also used to mentor them in terms of various athletic things. Studies-wise, I have been helping kids in terms of mathematics, science, all the STEM subjects, always. So I carry with me my experience of over 40-plus years to bring to this.
Thank you. Next question, how would you ensure that your decisions as a board member align with the district's mission and core values?
Very important, very important. Very early in my life, I had learned that education helps people come out of poverty and also that there are no limits to acquiring education. So what I did over the last many years is to sponsor students, provide them scholarships to study the subjects that are firstly dear to them, then dear to me. I did that. At the same time, in terms of ethics, because I deal with the government quite extensively, I deal with public quite extensively, ethics and morals are something that I live by always.
Thank you. Last question, how do you see the, or excuse me, what do you see as the most significant challenges currently facing South Brunswick schools, and how would you contribute to addressing them?
Great question. Thank you. What happened over the last few weeks was very disappointing to me, but I would put that behind me and look at what can be done in the going forward. If you all recall, I mean, I'm not sure how many of you know, but I have two of my own children who studied in the school district. And in fact, one of them went on to perform at the auditorium thanks to some of your team members. We had an arrangetum, that was the only arrangetum that was done in the last probably 15 years. So I have two lovely children who grew up in the schools, the schools over here, and they graduated from here. I know what the challenges they faced, what are the challenges that other kids could probably be facing. So I'm fully aware of it, and given that, I would be more than happy to contribute in any which way that will be possible to make the lives of all children better. And as I said earlier, education only helps people come out of poverty, and we don't want that. No child should be left behind. That's my immediate thought on this.
Perfect. Thank you very much for your time.
Pleasure, sir.
And thank you for your answers. Appreciate that.
Thank you very much. Is there any other question that anybody else would like to ask?
Not at this time. Thank you.
Sure. If any matter is required, feel free to reach out to me. I'm available on email.
We'll be making, we will be making a decision this evening.
Thank you very much.
Okay. And... Okay. He's coming in. We have our last candidate here.
Last candidate here.
Yep.
Hi, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I want to thank you for your interest in our vacant board seat, working with the Board of Education as a board member.
Right.
This evening, we have three questions we're asking all of the candidates. We are going to, after this portion of the interviews, we're going to move into an executive session, discuss. We're going to come back, nominate, and then appoint a candidate this evening to the vacant seat to begin work next board meeting.
Okay.
So with that being said, three questions. Take all the time you need because we're about an hour ahead of schedule, but no pressure. How would you approach balancing the needs of students, staff, and taxpayers when making decisions about the district budget?
Okay. Thank you for inviting me to the interview. So this is quite a, quite a wide question. So I would first, if I was put this task of deciding on this, I would first discuss with the other board members because, you know, the team that I'd work with and the board members would have opinions, and sometimes they may have experience in this area, which I may not have. So I would get input from them as to what were the prior approaches to this policy of balancing budget between the student staff and the taxes. So first, I would gather information on what were the prior approaches, how did they work out, what were the, how we can make the process better based on, you know, based on what we went, how we approached it before. So after collecting all this information and after discussing with the other board members who are involved in this question, then I would make this decision. Of course, taxes are very important to the community, and we need to, we need to ensure that the community sees value in the taxes that they pay. That's number one. Students, of course, are also a high priority because, of course, that's what we are all here for, to make sure that the students get the best benefit of the education at South Brunswick. And then staff, of course, will have a lot of experience in this area, how to best utilize the budget that is allotted to different areas. We should get their input as well. And based on this, we can make a decision. But I wouldn't say, okay, this comes first or this comes second. It is a, it is a balance between all three.
Thank you very much. Our second question, how would you ensure that your decisions as a board member align with the district's mission and core values?
So the district's mission and core values are decided by the board as a whole in line with state guidelines. So we're here to oversee that the state educational guidelines are presented, represented, and followed through as far as possible at South Brunswick. Of course, South Brunswick School District will have its own, its own requirements as to how we implement those guidelines. So again, going back to the board members and discussing with them, putting forward my opinion backed by proper investigation and proper numbers, proper statistics, I would put forward this, my ideas to the board and then, you know, as a board member to, to the Board of Education and also to the school district. And of course, I think aligning with the, with the township policies is very important. These policies are not something which can be changed from year to year, so they will be a continuation of whatever was there in the previous years with some amount of adjustment based on changes to, to the budget, changes to the, to the size of the student body, changes to the size of the township. All of these are, are changes which we see as we go along, and our policies may be adjusted accordingly. But there cannot be many drastic changes. So, you know, whatever ideas which would help the board and help the school district, I can put forward. But of course, I cannot insist on anything, and I don't think it'll make much difference if I insist on something anyway. So that should be, that would be my approach.
Thank you very much. Last question this evening, what do you see as the most significant challenges currently facing South Brunswick schools, and how would you contribute to addressing them?
I think there's quite a large influx of, into the community. The community, the community has grown significantly with a lot of new development in our area, and along with that, the student body is increasing. That would be, that would probably be the biggest challenge right now to our community and school district. So how to make sure that this sudden increase in students is accommodated in a way that the current students are not impacted, that the staff are not, are not overstretched, and the new students are also given equal opportunity. I think that would probably be the biggest challenge right now. And that would, you know, that, that is probably what we should be looking to tackle.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much for your answers, too.
Thank you.
Very, very well thought. That concludes our, our interviews for this evening.
Thank you.
We will, like I said, we will be nominating somebody and appointing somebody this evening for, preferably, our next board meeting start.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm ready. You can just call for a motion for executive session.
Motion for executive.
I'm going to. I want to vote for first. Okay. Now I just need a motion in a second to go into executive session. Rajah, motion.
Second.
Second. Ms. Carthick.
All in favor?
Aye.
Executive session, let's go.
And of course, I think aligning with the township policies is very important. These policies are not something which can be changed from year to year. So they will be a continuation of whatever was there in the previous years with some amount of adjustment based on changes to the budget, changes to the, to the size of the student body, changes to the size of the township. All of these are, are changes which we see as we go along. And our policies may be adjusted accordingly. But there cannot be many drastic changes. So, you know, whatever ideas which would help the board and help the school district, I can put forward. But of course, I cannot insist on anything. And I don't think it'll make much difference if I insist on something anyway. So that should be, that would be my approach.
Thank you very much. Last question this evening, what do you see as the most significant challenges currently facing South Brunswick schools? And how would you contribute to addressing them?
I think there's quite a large influx of, into the community. The community has grown significantly with a lot of new development in our area. And along with that, the student body is increasing. That would be, that would probably be the biggest challenge right now to our community and school district. So how to make sure that this sudden increase in students is accommodated in a way that the current students are not impacted, that the staff are not overstretched. And the new students are also given equal opportunity. I think that would probably be the biggest challenge right now. And that would, you know, that is probably what we should be looking to tackle.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much for your answers too. Very, very well thought. That concludes our, our interviews for this evening.
Thank you.
We will, like I said, we will be nominating somebody and appointing somebody this evening for preferably our next board meeting start.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You can just call for a motion for executive session.
Motion for executive session.
I'm gonna, I want to vote for it first. Okay. Now I just need a motion and a second to go into executive session. Rajah, motion.
Second.
Second. Ms. Carthick. All in favor?
Aye.
Executive session, let's go.
Oh yeah, wait, now we're good? Do I have to come back? We're live? Are we live?
We're live, yeah.
Okay.
So at this time, the Board of Education is looking for nominations to fill a seat on the vacancy on the Board of Ed. We had five candidates that came and spoke before us today. We asked them some questions, and I'm now looking to the current members of the Board of Education to make nominations. Can I get a nomination to our vacant-
I nominate Barry Nathanson.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Mike Mitchell. Do we have any other nominations for our seat? Julie?
I'd like to nominate Sujad Alarsh.
Can I have a second?
I can take it.
Any other nominations for a vacancy? Seeing none at this time?
Per the rules, can we nominate again or no?
You're, I'm asking for nominations.
Okay, so I would recommend nominate Dr. Parker.
Can I have a second?
One second.
Any other nominations for seat, vacancy in the Board of Education? At this time, we're going to open up a discussion for our first nomination, Mr. Barry Nathanson. Does anybody have any discussion? Seeing none, we do a roll call vote for Mr. Barry Nathanson for his seat, the vacant seat on the Board of Education. Ms. Julie Farrara?
Uh, no.
Alicia Khan?
Yes.
Rajakrishna?
Yes.
Mr. Mike Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Rajesh Soni?
No.
Mrs. Deepak Karthik?
Abstain.
Ms. Laura Hernandez?
Yes.
That is a majority of the current board. Mr. Barry Nathanson will fill our vacancy until the end of the school year and then be open for running if he chooses to do so. Thank you. Thank you all for those who participated. Thank you all for being here.
Okay, we now got to get back to her. Um.
Report of the President.
Report of the President. Okay, I have a couple things today. The first up is the update on the superintendent search. Right now, we have formed an ad hoc committee that will get together on August 4th with our search team who has been collecting resumes and recruiting people, and they are screening each resume that comes in, in person. And on the 4th, they will meet with four of us board members, and we will go through about, I told them, I asked them to bring us about 20 resumes, and we will go through those, and of those resumes, we'll narrow it down between eight and 12. And then we will have the first round of interviews for the permanent superintendent, September 4th, right? September 4th. September 4th, and that will be part one, and then part two of round one will be September 8th. And then based on how many we get from that, we will move into round two, and I will keep everybody abreast of what's going on with that. So that's where we are right now. The ad hoc committee consists of myself, President, Mrs. Deepak Karthik, Vice President, Rajakrishna, and Mike Mitchell. So those four are the ad hoc committee right now. Okay? So that's the first. Any questions from the board on that, guys? Any questions? We did just go through a process with, I know it's posted on the website, the profile that we're looking for in a superintendent. That profile came to be out of many focus groups that our search committee ran. We had student focus groups in the high schools, student focus groups in both of our middle schools, they had central office administration focus group, they had school administrators focus group, they had teachers administrative, I mean teachers focus group, they had union focus groups, and based on all that information that they gathered from all of those focus groups, they came up with a profile of, and community, how could I forget the community? We had two with the community. We had a virtual one, and we had an in-person, where the community came out and asked their questions and gave their input, and so based on all of that information that our search firm collected, they came up with a profile of what South Brunswick as a whole is looking for in a superintendent. They then turned around and opened it up freely to the board members to if we wanted to join in a meeting with them, so they went over their process with coming up with that profile. That profile is online for the community to see along with the qualifications in the superintendent that we're looking for. So that's where we are right now. Okay, and with that being said, with our full-time superintendent, we are on schedule, by the way, I was looking at, we came up in the beginning, I did share this with the community, we came up with a schedule on what we want to do as far as an interim superintendent and then a superintendent, and we are smack dab on time with where we are supposed to be, which for me, I'm very impressed because I'm usually never on time. So, yeah, we're right in line where we are, we collected everything. Right now, between August and October, the Board of Ed will interview the candidates, so we are on schedule. Now with the interim superintendent, we had our interviews. So with that being said, our interim superintendent, how we did the process is we advertised for it, we had some internal candidates, we had some external candidates, we had several first rounds of candidates that we interviewed as a board. We narrowed it down to two amazing candidates, and it was a very difficult decision. The board had a very long discussion after the final round of the two finalists that we had to come up with, and we did come up with a candidate, someone that we trust, somebody that we work with, somebody that's going to take the ball and run with it, and this nicks four or five months until we get our, our full-time superintendent. And with that said, I would like to say congratulations, Mr. Palowski, as he has been appointed our next interim superintendent.
Don't clap yet.
So Mr. Palowski will take on the dual role as a superintendent, the interim superintendent while he is still overseeing the tasks in the business office, he's already met with his team in the business office, he doesn't know this yet, but he'll be meeting with me next week.
Can I say, can I, I just have to say to everybody, truly, truly humbled to be provided this opportunity. Over the past eight years, I have learned so much from Scott and biggest shoes to fill, and I'll do my best, but I'm truly a servant to everybody here in the district, students, staff, board members. I'm working for all of you for the next five months, and I just want to make sure that everybody's very aware that without my staff in the business office and without the amazing staff here, Kim- staff here, Kim, Evelyn, and Suzanne, it would not be possible for somebody to do a job like this for the next five months, so I'm looking forward to working with everybody. But thank you very much.
Well, we welcome you. We welcome you, Davey. You know we're here for you too. So, and then my last bit of information, so as the community knows, this board knows, former board members know, there has been a, what do you call it, a case, a court case? Ethics charges that have been pending with our former Board of Education president, and the judge has given us a written decision on his ruling. It has been a long road going along the way, so I am just going to give you a quick summation of the judge's written decision, and we will go from there. The entire decision is posted on our website for anybody to read. Will be, will be, will be tomorrow, because I wanted to make this announcement first today, so it's not there yet, but it will be tomorrow. Okay, so with that being said, we have recently reviewed a preliminary decision by the judge overseeing the ethics complaint against former Board of Education President Joyce Metta. I do start with a word of caution, that this is a preliminary decision because it is now sent to the School Ethics Commission, the SEC, who may agree or disagree with the judge's decision or recommendations. I'm only providing a brief summary of the 26-page judge's decision and recommendations. The full document will be uploaded to the district website for those that prefer to read the entire ruling. An overall outcome demonstrates that the judge clearly finds that the board's initial concerns that Mrs. Metta's behavior violated her ethics were well-founded, as the judge agreed with the board's assertion on all counts. Specifically, the administrative law judge found that she violated her obligations to confidentiality with regard to negotiations, that she provided inaccurate information to the public, and that she failed to protect the administration in the proper performance of their duties. The judge specifically noted her failure to provide accurate information to the board relative to her communications with board counsel, which likely had an impact of harming Porsio, our board attorney, and their reputation. The George, the judge also specifically noted the improper nature of her prepared public statements, making accusations in regards to the superintendent who was read at, which was read at the board meeting. Those statements likely left the board with a false belief. Finally, the judge also noted that Joyce's First Amendment rights do not save her from punishment or consequences in this regard. Overall, the judge granted the relief we sought by the board, namely a public censure. You'll note on the last page of the decision that the judge walked through the reasons why the board want a public censure, specifically to hold Ms. Metta accountable and to set the record straight on the improper nature of her actions that were all taken in public. A final reminder that this is an initial decision, the recommendation regarding the censure must be reviewed by the SEC. We will keep the board and community updated on any follow-up that we receive. And that is my report. Okay.
Ready?
I'm ready.
All right. Welcome, everyone. First, thank you to the candidates that put themselves forth, that's very much appreciated. Congratulations, Barry. We'll see you back again, I guess, then? Yeah. But thank you very much for doing, for putting yourselves out there and being the willingness to serve and volunteer. A few, a few real quick things. First, I just wanted to follow up what Laura shared about Dave. Dave is going to be definitely doing a challenging situation of dealing with both these two seats on a daily basis, that's a lot, but good luck, and don't break anything. All right. So the last two days, we do every summer, we have an administrative, a two-day workshop. That concluded today, and it's going to go over a few of the things that, so you hear what the, what the admin do in these workshops. I think the thing that is most always appreciated is we bring in a lawyer. It's a lawyer from the state, and she does a fabulous job, so much so that, I think we just keep bringing her back, Suzanne, right? I mean, every year, we just keep bringing the same person back. We are able to give the lawyer the topics we want addressed so that they can address those. This year, two of the, two of the main focuses were on the, on the laws around surrounding ML students, ELL students. There's a lot that goes into that, that was a big part of the topics. Another very large part was executive orders and how that impacts schools, and the difference between executive orders, laws, states' rights, federal rights, circuit judges, it was actually, it was a fantastic, I think, lesson on civics. It was, it was really, really fantastic. But she, she's a real talent, and we love having her there. She comes for an hour every summer, and it's really a great hour. Another big part of the day, goal setting, that was led by the team here, and that's extremely important for the administrators to consider what they're approaching next year, how they're going to go about that. That then gets linked to the board, and all that starts, starts at this meeting every year. So, you know, a lot, a lot more happens, but those are some of the highlights. One particular highlight that she brought up, that we already know about, that is of concern, because if we didn't have a financial concern, it wouldn't be another day in South Brunswick, but this particular concern is not a South Brunswick issue, this is a country issue, this is a national issue, and this revolves around the federal funding. So federal funding comes in the way of various methods. We have grants, our entitlement grants for different things. Our largest grant outside of IDEA, IDEA is for special education, that is our largest. After that, I think it would be Title I, which is how we support struggling students who come from economically challenged backgrounds. That's, Suzanne, about 480, 480, 500,000-ish annually? I think it's about, I think it's about there. We don't believe that particular count is going to get hit. We don't believe so, but normally, we have these numbers already, but the federal government put all these fundings on a freeze. So if you think about why that's extremely difficult for a school district is, number one, we have to pass a budget back in May, so we passed that budget. That budget, we calculate an expectation of funding that follows a pattern. So normally, we've been getting funding at certain rates. So while we were cautious, we were cautious expecting there could be some problem with this, we are now facing a situation where we don't know. That's, the unknown, as we've shared over meetings and meetings and meetings, the unknown is a killer, and to not be able to budget, if you can imagine any company have no clue what to expect, ever, not being able to make a, even an educated guess. So Title I, why we think is the biggest, is going to hopefully be untouched, there are other ways, there are other grants as well, there's Title II-A, there's Title III, there's Title IV. We believe it is possible all of those other titles will be gone, possible. One of those is Title III, that is one we are and have been expecting will be gone, that is five, about 60 grand, that goes towards how supporting students who speak another language, so we believe that'll be completely cut. Title II-A goes to how we support teachers in, in learning, that one is 128, Suzanne? If I remember correctly? And we believe that one could be fully cut. Title IV, only about 15,000, that could be completely cut. So right now, we are on hold for a couple hundred thousand dollars. If you think of how that plays out, that's three certificated salaries, is one way to look at that. So while we are preparing for that, it's, it's past mid-July, and we don't have this information, and we have staff that we've had to make decisions about back in May. And even if you start your first hire for positions, and let's say the money comes through, you're still, you're still delayed. It's, it's just a mess. But again, that's not a South Brunswick, that's not like S2, it's just the way it is right now, and this is, the whole country is in the same boat, every school district is in the same boat. If you can imagine Title III, ML students, if you can imagine some states where there are many, 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 many ML students, and districts that have many, I can't imagine the catastrophe this would be for those districts. For us, only 60,000, it's not good, but it's not going to break the bank, but when you put them all together, 200,000 is a lot of money. So anyway, we're in the middle of facing that, and that's a big deal. So we will keep you posted. I think, Suzanne, you check about, what, every hour, on the hour, to see if we get anything come through, but we don't know yet. Maybe, maybe I'm overplaying it, maybe it'll be better than I'm describing, I hope it's not worse. Worse would be that they cut Title I funding in some way, that's, that'd be worse. But even so, we currently have earmarked money that we may have to cut out of the budget, which is things that support kids and programs. That 200,000 goes to various ways to support various students, so it's, it's a problem. But, you know, we've been here before with larger numbers. The ML I said before was ELL, ESL, students that have a second language, students that speak English as a second language, so their primary language is not English. Laura over here kind of knows a little bit about that, because when she takes off her Board of Education cape, she goes to Trenton Public Schools and works with ML students, that's her job. So I can imagine, well, if you still have a job next year, who knows? Might be a full-time president next year, you never know. So we're working through that. Also, board, board members on your agenda tonight, I am recommending Mr. Edward Knapp. Ed, raise your hand up there. You're not going anywhere yet, just sit there for now, but recommending Edward Knapp to be your next athletic director in the district. Good guy, currently works at Lakewood, and excited to join us, so hopefully you'll approve his, the recommendation today, and we're very excited to have him, this is one really, really chill guy that knows the business well. Coached tons of sports, great guy, went through the process, and we're excited, so, and I'm hoping for you tonight, good luck, man. Hoping the best. Other than that, where it's, it's season, I mean, it's, Dave and I will be overlapping over the next month, and goal, of course, is to support the district, continue supporting the district, keep moving things forward and doing that, and looking forward to that work too. And other than that, I'm, I'm, that's my report.
Okay, good report. Okay, so next up, Pete, I should probably make you say a speech and not be prepared, what do you think? Every time I'm with Pete, he makes me say something that I'm not ready to say. But you are up, please come on up and join us.
He did it to me, too.
Yeah, he does it to me all the time.
All right, thank you, we are prepared. Thank you, Board of Education and the public. I'm Peter Rattin, Director of Special Projects, and with me is Jeff Rubin, the Assistant Principal at South Brunswick High School. We're here to present tonight on the New Jersey Graduation Proficiency Assessment. We are required to present on this and the data from the spring 2025 assessment, and we're required to present within 60 days of receiving the data from the state, and so the data is pretty new to us as well, so we're presenting it to you tonight, but we're going to also present it with some context tonight, and so that's why we're both here, bringing some different lenses to hopefully give more than just numbers, kind of what's behind the numbers as well. So as context, I serve as the district test coordinator, so I oversee kind of testing across the district, and Jeff is the school test coordinator, so he oversees it for the high school, as well as obviously serving as the assistant principal there, so he has a greater lens from there as well. I'm going to start by just sharing what is the New Jersey Graduation Proficiency Assessment, and so a few pieces here. It's a required assessment that is taken by 11th graders. It's a high school graduation assessment requirement, it was effective in 2021 in September, but I want to be clear on this part here, and Jeff is going to go into more detail about how this part works. If a student does not meet that requirement, meaning the student doesn't pass that assessment, there are other ways, and so that's what we're going to go through tonight in a little bit more detail about what those other ways are, how we support, and how we get the students to graduate. It's a state-required assessment for all juniors, so 11th graders take that, so what we're going to be showing you later tonight, we're not going to start with it, is the 11th grade results, those are the students going into 12th grade this coming September, but we're going to bring you back a little bit first. It's English Language Arts, and then there's a math component as well. So that second-to-last kind of main bullet there gives you the, the two pieces. There's two units of English Language Arts, and there's two units of math, math, sorry. Each unit is 90 minutes, and so you'll see ELA is 180 total minutes, broken into two, and math, same thing, 180, broken into two different units. And the passing score that was kind of changed and modified in May 3rd, 2023, is 725 or higher.
So like Peter shared, we wanted to give you some context about what we do in terms of teaching and learning and how we support students through this process of the graduation requirement, assessment requirement. So we thought that the best way to potentially share that with you was to go back a year. So a year ago, you had a similar presentation on the NJGPA results for the class of 2025, and we wanted to start off by filling you in kind of with the reactive approach we have, you know, when we get the results, what do we do now to support those students and to get them across this finish line of the graduation assessment requirement? So we're going to go backwards a little bit, and I'm going to explain the three different pathways our students have, and share with you some data from the class of 2025 that just graduated and how they all completed this requirement. And then we're going to, Pete's going to share some of the results from this year, and then we're going to end with kind of our proactive approaches that we're doing at the high school through curriculum and instruction and a variety of different methods to try to help support students in advance of taking this test. One thing I did want to highlight before I jump into it, you're going to hear me talk a lot in the next few minutes about the work that our teachers at the high school are doing. So Peter, myself, and the rest of the team at the high school, and the other support we have here at the table in front of me, we put a lot of systems and processes in place, but at the end of the day, it's our teachers that are, that are doing all of the work. They're the boots on the ground supporting our students, especially in this context, our English and math teachers are there for our students, and they're just rock stars at doing this, they're really great at it. We hit the ground running in September, as I'm about to share, so I don't want that to be lost, I'm going to talk a lot about teachers, but they are really, really good at this and really good at supporting our, our students. All right, we just liked this graphic. All right, so the, the pathways. The first pathway is to take the NJGPA and to pass the NJGPA with that cut score of a 725. Now, this happens in March, in the spring, and our seniors then show up on the first day of school in September in 2024, a year ago, and when they walked through the door about a year ago, 91% of them had met this assessment requirement in English already, and 81% of them had met it in math. Now, I want to highlight that those numbers are slightly different than the numbers that were in the report a year ago, simply because of a few factors with students. One, sometimes we have students that leave our district, right? So they would no longer be included in these numbers at the start of the senior year if they left in between the test and then. We also get students that come into our district, so especially if a student comes to our district from outside of the state, they, they never took the NJGPA before, so there was no way for them to have met this requirement. Additionally, we have issues where students just aren't in school for testing, medical issues, things like that, that just happen in life. So those students also wouldn't have been included in the report last year simply because they didn't take the test, but this was our starting point. Now, also kind of part of the first pathway, we do re-administer the test to our seniors in October. Any student that didn't pass the test or didn't take the test is invited to take the NJGPA in October. I meet with most of them and kind of explain where they're at and how it works, but at the end of the day, we don't really like to rely on that test administration for the students meeting the requirement, for two reasons. One, the test doesn't happen till the middle of October, and we like to get started in September to make sure that we're getting all the students across this finish line, and two, we don't get the results back until pretty much January, which is halfway through their senior year, and we don't want something this important to wait that long. So there is an October administration that would count towards pathway one, it's an opportunity for students, but it's not something that we rely on. Now, to get to the other pathways, Now, to get to the other pathways, students do have to sit for the NJGPA, right? So the only way to access Pathway Two is to sit for the NJGPA at some point. Now, there's two slides here that are very similar. One is for math and one is for ELA. This one's the English Language Arts. You'll notice Pathway Two includes a lot of other standardized tests that the state says we can use to fulfill this requirement for students. On the list there, you'll notice tests that are probably very familiar to you, SATs, PSATs, ACTs. Those are tests that many of our students take as they prepare to go off to college and just part of the testing that they go through in high school. The Accuplacer is a test up there, standardized test. That's one that we choose to use a lot at the high school. So the Accuplacer is a unique test in the fact that we get to decide when we want to administer it. We can pretty much administer it at any time. Whereas the ACTs, the PSATs, and the ACTs, those are set testing days that students have to sign up for outside of class. For the Accuplacer, our math and English teachers that help in this process, they're trained and allowed to administer this test whenever. The other perks of the Accuplacer, it's short, takes about an hour to do, we get immediate results, and it's pretty cost efficient as well. So what our teachers do for the second pathway, and we do it a little differently in math and English departments, simply because, as you saw on the first slide, there's more math students that we need to help through this process. So in the math department, we have two teachers who are, have dedicated time in their schedules to help students through this. In the English department, we use our English Help Center and the teachers, the certified teachers there, to help with this process. So when the students take the Accuplacer, it takes them about an hour. Usually in September, we just try to get them all to sit for it. Some of the students pass it, and they're good to go. For the students that don't pass, we get a score report. And that's where our teachers really step in and start supporting students with individual and small group instruction. That score report will highlight areas and standards where our students need more instruction and more support. The teachers will then provide that to the students, and then we can retest on the Accuplacer. So Pathway Two, for us at the high school in terms of timeline, really goes from September till just about January as well. And we're working with students, testing them in the Accuplacer, waiting on their outside PSAT, SAT, ACT results to come in as well, and seeing how many students we can get to satisfy the requirement. So you'll see for English, we had 91% that I already mentioned passed the NJGPA. 1.5% satisfied the requirement through the SAT and PSAT. We don't have too many that ever use the ACT for this requirement. And then our English teachers were able to get another 5.1% of the students to satisfy this requirement using that Accuplacer. In the math department, we had 81% originally passed the NJGPA, another 4.5%, 4.6% through SATs and PSATs, and 11.3% of our students met this requirement using the Accuplacer. All right? So that brings us to the third. Sure.
Does it mean the 2.4% have not passed?
Nope, we're getting there in the next, next two or three slides. So there's a third pathway still, and then I have one other comment. And the, the great exciting news, you beat me to the punch, is that we're going to, we'll be at 100% by the time I'm done with the next couple of slides. All right, so the third pathway is what's called the Portfolio Appeal. So this number of students that met the requirement through the Portfolio Appeal is actually too small for us to report out. So our reporting requirements publicly are that if anything's less than 10 students, we can't report on it. So it's a single-digit number of students that completed this third pathway. Now, the Portfolio Appeal usually takes place around February, January and February, and it's a pretty intense process where our teachers work one-on-one with students. They give them targeted instruction on the standards that need to be met, and then they're tested on those standards, and their, the end result, their work, is put together in a portfolio that we submit to the state as evidence of their learning according to the standards that need to be met for this requirement. The state will then approve it, and we're able to mark them as complete in our information systems. So at the end of the day, if you're, if you're doing the math as you started to, it ends up to be a little bit less than 100%. But we also have students with IEPs that have some specialized learning plans that take care of the graduation requirement for them, either through some other specialized tests or through waivers. So at the end of the day, what, what we really wanted to share about the context of this is every student met this requirement for the graduating class of 2025 through the work of the teachers in Pathway Two and Pathway Three, and then we, we get every student across the finish line. That's the exciting news that we were, we were hoping to share. So Mr. Rattin's going to share with you some of the data, and then I'll come back for the proactive side of what we do to support students.
All right, so just want to make sure you know where we're shifting from. So Jeff just shared with you the class that just graduated. And so that was this one in June graduating class. We are now moving to this current year's 12th grade. And so they took this in the fall, in, I should actually say spring. That's a, that's an error right there. It's data from spring, sorry, of 2025, all right? So graduating class of 2026. These are their results in the pie chart up top. So the ELA results for the students that took this was 89% proficient, and our math results was 81.2% proficient. We included some previous data, just so that you had some context from some previous years with this. Just going to leave that up for a moment, because I know there's a few pieces of data up there. I'm going to switch over to give you a little bit more in-depth look at some of our subgroups. This one is specifically the English Language Arts piece. You'll notice that there are two subgroups that we are not allowed to report out. Again, that's what Jeff mentioned, that it's under 10 as a number. But I'm going to leave this up for a moment as well and not kind of talk through it so that you can look at it for a moment. So I'm about to transition to the math one. Before I do, just the top one being New Jersey is all of the New Jersey students in 11th grade that took this assessment. Then the second one is our 657 South Brunswick 11th graders that took this again in the spring, this most recent spring.
I have a question. So do some of these categories overlap?
Yes.
Like if you're Hispanic and, okay.
Absolutely.
Okay. Just wanted to make that clear.
Thank you. All right, I'm going to switch over to math by subgroups here. As I mentioned earlier, this data came in fairly recent. And so when these results come in, you're looking at percentages that we're looking at, too. Looking at information that obviously we want to dig into a little bit more as well. Actually, Jeff and I were doing that fairly recently as we started to. And so that's, that's some of our work ahead as well. But I want to show you one more piece here. So in math, wanted to kind of give you an indication here, right? So 18.8% did not meet the requirement in math. And then 10.8 did not meet it in ELA. Now, the middle section there represents 8.8% of the students that did not meet it in both, right? So we want to be able to show you kind of that piece, which is not illustrated in the other data. So we're talking about 8.8% of the students that did not meet it in both of those sections. We don't have that, no, we don't have that information.
Okay.
Yeah, the state, the state has reported almost everything that we're showing to you here. Actually, pretty much it is everything we're showing to you, but we do not, do not have that information. Yeah, we take the reports, every single report that we get and share it that way. I do want to share that I know one of the, you'll, you'll see the disparity between the percentage of, of math versus ELA. And we're talking about, you know, about an 81% and a 91% in one subject versus another. The state disparity is more like 22 in the difference, so we're, we're more at 10. So I just want to share that as well as a piece, because that is one other piece of data that we had, because sometimes it looks like, well, why aren't we performing as well in each subject? That is a state trend that's actually more exaggerated at the state, across the state than it is here in South Brunswick.
No, and that's my perspective, personal perspective. I don't compare ourselves with state because that state averages average. I would rather compare ourselves, at least within the county or our surroundings or somebody who's better personally, then we can look for opportunities to improve. So just my two cents on, whenever we compare to state, I probably get a little turned off.
I think a lot of us would agree with that. Definitely the information that we have, though. So now in terms of supporting these students, right? These are our students who are going to walk in in September as seniors. So here's what we're going to do. We're going to go right to that second pathway. We're going to go right to the Accuplacer and, and move to that. And so for some, they may have already had an approved passing score. You saw that percentage was low, but there's going to be some students with that. And Jeff over here is, is quite humble. He's the one who is on top of every single one of the graduating class of seniors to make sure that they all pass. He is running reports 24/7. So he's that one that does that. And, and then you can see the second part is, most of these students are going to be going into that Accuplacer assessment and, and starting that. And so you'll see the second part is, yes, they'll be invited to the NJGPA again in the fall of 2025. For most of them, the Accuplacer is going to catch it, and that's really our go-to one. And, and you'll hear that over and over. The Accuplacer is the big one for us. That's where we're going to get a lot of our students across the finish line. But again, we'll get some to, to retake NJGPA. Some who came in new to us have to take it. And so even if they came in new to us, just want to clarify this. Someone comes in new to New Jersey, the country, and they're sitting in South Brunswick High School, they're going to sit for NJGPA, but before they sit for it, they're going to sit for the Accuplacer, because we're going to get those results right away and not wait until January to find out what happened with NJGPA. And then, of course, there's that third pathway for some of the remaining students. It's a very, very small handful that if we have that, that'll be that specialized instruction to help them complete a portfolio appeal. So this is our plan, as we've done very similarly with our previous graduating class that has been successful, that we want to continue.
So the last thing we wanted to share, the last piece we wanted to share tonight about this process and what we're doing to support students is all about the proactive approaches that we're taking centered on teaching and learning at the high school. So I know Mr. Feder already mentioned it tonight, but this is something that, as an administrator at the high school, I'm pretty proud of the work that our teachers and our supervisors and just everybody at the high school's been doing. Between the budgetary restraints and staffing constraints, we've gotten really creative with how we're using the existing resources we have, being good stewards of the resources we have, and being really flexible with scheduling and how we're implementing some of this work. So we've introduced in the last couple of years math labs in our Algebra I and Algebra II classes that give our students an extra section of math where they get really targeted support surrounding those standards that will show up eventually on the NJGPA. Similarly, similarly, this year, we're going to be working to pull students out of their study halls for some small group targeted instruction using, using the English Help Center. That'll function a lot, kind of like the math labs do, but on the English side of things. We have been able to keep alive our math and English Help Centers, which is certified math and English teachers who are available all eight blocks of our schedule for students to drop in for extra support. We've recently started looking at data where we can use our NJSLA results from ninth graders to try to draw some correlations between what they're doing in ninth grade and how they're performing in 11th grade. That'll give us one more piece of data to start targeting students even earlier for the, the supports that we're able to put into place. We started using Linkit at the high school this past year, so it's been rolling out throughout the district. We've been using it for a few years now. Linkit's a data warehousing system, so it collects all of our testing and assessment data, our demographic data, attendance data. Evelyn loves it. She'll tell you all about it sometime. That's what she tells me, at least. And, but we can also use it to administer some common assessments, benchmark assessments, things like that. You'll notice the last bullet point, that's another thing we're going to be focusing on at the high school. So we used it this year for our Algebra II final exam, and we're looking to use it a lot more frequently because it'll help us to see trends for students and especially once we get into standards-based things, really be able to target our instruction for specific students and for specific areas within the curriculum. We've introduced some co-teaching in the recent years to, in classes that it's not traditionally offered. And another big part of our work this year with our I and RS rebrand is to try to introduce a lot more tier-one evidence-based strategies in everyday instruction to support our students who need it. So we've kind of got a lot of different pieces to this plan to try to support our students and in the hopes that in years to come, we'll be using those second and third pathways even less and less. That's the goal, is to get our students to perform better on the NJGPA. So with that, we want to thank you. Special thanks to Dr. Evelyn Mammon and Ms. Suzanne Luckborn for their guidance and leadership and helping us put this presentation together, and thank you for your time tonight.
I, I just have one question.
Of course, that was going to be the last.
Can, can we back try?
Sure.
It took me a while for it to absorb. Couldn't you go back to the Venn diagram?
Absolutely.
Okay, am I reading that wrong? But isn't like the 8.8 when they have in common? How am I getting 2% on one side and then 8.8 that they have?
So you got to look at, if you're looking just at ELA, look at everything that's in green. That's the 8.8 and the 2%. So the total number of students that did not show proficiency on the NJGPA last year was 10.8%. And the, the math is everything that's in blue, so it's the middle section plus the light blue, so 10 plus the 8.8, that's the 18.8% that didn't show proficiency in math. 8.8 is the overlap that, that didn't show proficiency in both math and ELA.
I'm still not getting it. I mean, I get how a Venn diagram works, but if I only have 2% in ELA, how?
2% that didn't meet the requirement just in ELA.
Okay.
Only in ELA.
Okay, okay.
Yep, and 10%, 10% that didn't show proficiency only in math.
I got it.
Yeah.
I got it now. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you so much. Okay, any questions? Do we have any questions? We could thank you so much for your work. We so appreciate it.
Thank you.
We do, thank you. Okay. I would say our next order of business is board committee and liaison reports, but we haven't, am I correct? We have not had any committee meetings, so I'm not even going to call on those. Do I have any liaison reports? Ms. Khan?
Yeah, as a liaison for the Commission on Women, I just wanted to say that we will actually be at National Night Out, where we'll be doing a heart-to-heart garden activity where we invite community members to decorate a heart or flower, and we'll put it on a poster for the Domestic Violence Awareness Walk. And we actually are looking for student volunteers to help set up the table and also just hand out flyers at the event. So if anyone is interested, please reach out to me, and I'll get you set up with that. And we are offering hours for the volunteers. And also, I just wanted to announce that we do have the date finalized for the Domestic Violence Awareness Walk, and it's going to be October 26th. So we also are looking for volunteers for that, if anyone is interested.
Awesome, thank you. Maybe we could talk to the high school to see if you can put something out there to get student volunteers.
Yeah.
Okay, anybody else? All right, moving on. Old business, none at this time. New business, none at this time, which brings us to our consent agenda review. Mr. Palowski?
Yep. So today, today's consent agenda is fairly quick. We have all of our business and board, board business, so bills list. We're approving a cancellation, cancellation of some outstanding checks. We have some IDA basic and preschool funding that's coming in. We're approving some non-public state aid allotments for a couple of private schools in, in district. We're approving a competitive grant. We're accepting funds from Chapter 192, 193. Those are pass-through monies from the state. We're increasing our bid threshold. This is kind of important only in the sense that now the, the state is allowing us to go up to $53,000 before we go out for a bid. They moved it from $44,000 to $53,000. They moved it from $44,000 to 53. It's going to make things in our purchasing department act a little bit easier. So 1.7 is a much-needed and appreciated move by the state of New Jersey. We're approving an educational consulting service with We Climb Consulting, or Lift as We Climb. We're approving renewal of proprietary license and subscriptions. These are software packages that are proprietary in their formation. They cannot be redesigned or reproduced by any other organization, so they have a proprietary license. This came from our auditor in the sense that every once in a while, we have a purchase order that comes out and we'll write on the purchase order it's proprietary, and they've never been board-approved before. So our auditor suggested that we board-approve all of our proprietary licenses, and so we have it. So another one in 110 is Riverside Insights. We're approving over the bid limit for Amplify Education. That's our dyslexia screening and boost reading student license and some teacher training. We're also approving some grounds equipment. We have a 30-year-old lawnmower that needed to be replaced, and those are, both of those purchases are over the bid limit, so you're board-approving those this evening. We're also approving a purchase over the bid limit of national fuel and oil, even though it's done on state contract, the not-to-exceed of $285,000 requires us to have that board approved. We're approving some increase in lunch prices. Just some heads up on this real quick. Our lunch prices are still below Middlesex County average, and they're also below what the state will allow us to raise them to. So we're not gouging and not moving anything way above any means. We're still a pretty decent game in town for our lunch and breakfast at both high school, middle school, elementary, and staff. It's still a good deal. I know, Mr. Sony, you had questions on that. I'm going to get you some specific numbers on those, but overall, we're still below average for Middlesex.
I want to hear too, because I saw his question as to why we're raising it.
Okay. So yeah, I can talk a little, the reason why is all of our expenses have exploded. So our labor costs have increased, our meals, cost per meals have increased. And what we're coming to is the state of New Jersey's come out years ago and said you cannot subsidize your lunch program. So they kind of put us in a situation where we have to charge enough in lunches to be able to at least break even. We asked Matios to come to the table with a guarantee at the end of the year, and they're coming to me and saying, if we don't raise some prices, you're not going to see that guarantee at the end of the year. And we budgeted that guarantee in our actual budget as a revenue source. So we're stuck in a pickle with regards to what we're currently charging and the revenue source that we're expecting for next year's budget.
Our free and reduced lunch kits, that's picked up in Title I funds, yes?
No, it's not picked up in Title I.
It's a separate fund. That comes from the state, though, right? It comes from the state, right? Okay.
So since we are on that topic, so what I captured is the trigger is high cost, and this request is coming from Matio, right? It's not, oh, it's okay. And you said state also mandated or state also asked us to increase or reduce our subsidies?
No, the state requires that we not expend any district funding, any taxpayer-funded money on losses in our food service providing, or food service company. So we have a guarantee that we agreed on with Matios at the end of the year. They're supposed to provide us so much as a reimbursement back to the district for doing business in the district. What they're coming back and saying to us is if we don't raise our prices, we're not going to see that guarantee. And what I'm saying to everybody is if we don't see that guarantee, we bet on that, we agreed to that guarantee to ensure that our budget, we're using that guarantee to offset expenses in our Fund XI.
But isn't that part of the contract?
It is part of the contract, but it's also.
So how can they say they can't guarantee? It's contracted.
Come again?
So how can the provider, the vendor, say they cannot guarantee the same what they have committed to?
We made their guarantee this year. We're all.
If we have a guarantee, regardless of whether we raise the prices, they still have to give us our guarantee. That's the question.
Right. But at the same time, they can't make that, they can't make that guarantee because they're...
This contract is signed, that's what I'm trying to understand.
The contract is signed, but expenses go up, costs go up. At the same time, they're expected to make a guarantee. The only revenue source that they have is...
Let me ask, is the guarantee dependent on our agreement to the increase? That's for Jesse's question. Is the guarantee that they offer us tied to or dependent on us agreeing to their meal price?
Yes. The guarantee, the guarantee is based on them being able to pay or them being able to charge a certain amount of money per lunch every year and having the ability to increase those rates.
So it's, sorry, so it's capped at that percentage increase? So for example, in that...
It's not capped, we're well below a capped percentage increase.
In the contract, the contract, does it say that Matios cannot, well, the guarantee stands for only X amount of percentage increase and they will not go beyond that?
I'm not understanding that question.
So for example, we've raised, we've raised per lunch or per meal, it's 25 cents. So is that, is that in their agreement that says that they cannot go over 25 cents? Or can they, is there an upper limit?
No, there's ability for them to go higher. There's ability for us as a district to agree to go higher than 25%.
And that's part of the contract, right?
Yeah, it's part of the regulations.
Okay, I'm going to rephrase my question so I understand better. So in the contract that we signed, we have agreed to allow for the increase so that we get the guaranteed return?
Correct. It's their only, it's their only source of revenue. You have to realize it's their only...
That would be something we would sign regardless of who our vendor is.
Correct.
Right, so any vendor we would have, we would be doing this, so.
Correct.
And so I think you answered, the impact is we won't be able to get the same return as part of the contract if we don't increase. That's the impact.
If you're, if, yes. Anything else? All right, let's move, keep moving. So where were we on that? We have, we're approving disposal sale of some district property that's outlived its useful life. We're moving forward with a district mentoring plan. We have a statement of assurance assuring the district mentoring plan for the 25, 26 school year. We're approving extension of professional services. We're approving a charter school placements and tuitions and out-of-district placements in 118. 119, we're accepting tuition students, and 120, we're approving our travel-related expenses and reimbursements. We're approving in 121, student field trips, and in 122, we're, we have our HIB bullying reports, and we have a sidebar on 123. And then you have in .2 or 2.0, you have your personnel and HR changes rosters.
I have a question about 1.1 board. The mentoring program, is it in district mentors, mentors to new teachers?
Yes, your mentors are in district educators.
And are they compensated?
Yes, they are compensated.
Okay, is it a stipend compensation?
Yes, it is.
I didn't see that compensation in the program. Is it separately handled in the plan, I mean?
It's been a longstanding compensation package for them.
So it's the same?
Yep, it's the same, it's been for years.
It hasn't changed?
It has not changed.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Yes, I was going to let you finish the readout.
He's finished.
I'm finished, yep.
Okay. So a question on 1.1. I see two entries on the medical side in A and B. I understand the first one in A is all the insurance plans that we pay for the staff, I believe. It's roughly around $2 million, and I see another entry of $3 million. Can you help me understand what is the $3 million entry in A 1.1B? The payment of the...
That is, I responded to your email. It's a, it's a reserve that we are required by our actuaries to hold in case we have a situation where our claims far exceed the expectation.
Okay.
So every year, we're required to hold about $3 million in a reserve line for, as per our actuaries, to ensure that if we have a really horrible year with regards to claims, that we're able to pay for those.
Is that an escrow account?
It's not an escrow, yeah.
It's like an escrow account?
It's a reserve line. You can call it an escrow account for layman's terms.
That's how I thought it. Just so, first of all, I don't know if you responded, I haven't received it, but so I'll kind of go through it again. I'll just touch on the main ones. We increased the threshold price, is it coming from the state?
Yes.
So we're just aligning to following the state order?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and maybe I'm the only one here, I do not understand sidebar agreement. Can you please help me understand what is it?
So the sidebar agreement is sometimes when we're unable to get a substitute teacher, the teachers will cover. So we have an agreement how to compensate that coverage.
So the teachers themselves cover?
So if I'm, if I'm a teacher, second-grade teacher, and another second-grade teacher is absent for some reason, but we could not get a sub for that.
Okay.
Let's just say I had to take that class with my class. We have, we have, we have an agreement to compensate, how we compensate for those scenarios. So it's not a new agreement, it's the same agreement we've had. For you, it's obviously new, but it's an agreement we've had for about three years now. It sunsets at the end of the year, and we see how we do.
Okay, and the prices have already been decided?
It's all in the, it's all in the stipends, it's all in the, the amount of money is agreed upon.
So may I ask, so what are we approving? It's already in motion?
You just got to speak a little louder.
So what are we approving? It's already in flight, it's inactive for three years, prices is done, so...
No, so there's the contract does not specifically answer this particular question. So when that happens, and the board and the union are in agreement on how to manage that when it's not specific in the contract, we have the ability to come to a sidebar until you renegotiate the whole contract. At that time, you'll decide to put it in permanently or not.
Okay, so this is not...
This is like a for now because it's not in the contract.
I have one other question, too. On 1.4, how do we determine the allotments for non-public state?
They come, it comes from the state.
It's, the state gives that exact amount. And the breakdown between the four categories, could you elaborate on security?
It comes from, it comes from the individual schools in terms of their budgets and what they've agreed to with the state.
In terms of security?
Yeah.
We're just like...
I'm not, I'm a pass-through on that. I don't have anything to do with their security plans.
Okay, but these figures are allotted from the state out of our budget?
No.
No, so this is pass-through money.
It comes from the state and it goes through us to them.
Yeah.
This is pass-through money.
These exact amounts.
Those amounts currently, yep. They may change during, throughout the year.
Okay, thank you.
I remembered, last time I asked the same question, so I remembered it was a pass-through, man.
Any other questions? All right, that's your consent agenda this evening.
Roll call?
Yes. Roll call vote on consent agenda. Ms. Julie Ferrara?
Accept.
Ms. Alicia Khan?
Yes.
Mr. Rajakrishnan?
Yes.
Mr. Mike Mitchell?
Yes, but I'd like to abstain on Part B under the HR agenda. The second item, please. Hopefully I'm saying that correctly.
Part B on HR.
Part B, the second item under that?
We have Mr. Rajesh Sony?
Yes.
Ms. Deepakarthik?
Yes.
Ms. Laura Hernandez?
Yes.
Motion carries.
It's on me? Oh, I thought you were going to do that. Okay, so now we're on to our public comment. Any topic?
So actually, you guys just approved Mr. Edward Knapp. So congratulations, Ed. You are the new athletic director. We want to, we might put people on the spot, so yeah, get up there and give us some words.
Good evening. First of all, thank you. Say that first, especially Mr. Feder. It's been a terrific experience. You know, unfortunately, I won't get to see him that much, but I want to thank him especially. I'd like to thank all of you for having me and giving me this opportunity. It's a tremendous one, and I pledge you I'll do the best I can to continue to support the students, the staff, the coaches, and the athletes of South Brunswick, and very optimistic things are going to, again, part of the piece of the puzzle, and expect, expectation is to be, you know, continue to be excellent. So thank you again.
All right, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Okay, so well, on behalf of the board, congratulations. Welcome to South Brunswick. It's an awesome place to be. 100 years ago, I played softball for South Brunswick. So welcome, we're so happy to have you here. Okay, now, public comment on any topic. The Board of Education recognizes the value of public comment on educational issues and the importance of allowing members of the public to express themselves on school matters of community interest. Complete copies of Policy 0167, which govern this portion of the meeting, are available to the public at the auditorium entrance, online, or by contacting the board office. To permit the fair and orderly expression of comments, we ask that the participants are recognized by the presiding officer and preface their comments by announcing his or her name, place of residence, and group affiliation if applicable, and by completing the sign-in sheet. Please print legibly, or we may not be, we will be unable to document your name for the permanent record. Each statement made by a participant shall be limited to three minutes. No participant may speak more than once on the same topic. Mr. Pulowski will indicate when you have 15 seconds remaining. All statements shall be directed to the presiding officer. No participant may address or question board members. No discussions between a participant or respondent shall exceed the three-minute time limit with a total limit of one hour. It is our plan to listen to each member of the public. Once all questions and comments from all members of the public are made, the Board of Education may respond or respond via email in the most timely and efficient manner available. All questions and comments may be noted. We welcome all comments. We welcome all opinions. We do not welcome disrespect. So please keep that in mind if you're going to come up for public comment. Mr. Pulowski, do we have anybody registered to speak?
We have no preregistrations.
Okay, with that being said, do we have somebody in the audience that would like to speak? You're next. First we have him, and then we'll go. Is there a sign-in sheet up there?
We know you are.
President of South Brunswick Education Association, I just wanted to come up and thank Scott for his many years of service with us. We've been able to collaborate very closely, and I've enjoyed that relationship with you and all other people, many of the people that are on the board today and sitting in central office. So I also wanted to welcome back Barry. So congratulations to him and to congratulate Mr. Pulowski on his position as interim superintendent. We look forward to working with you in the same way that we have with Scott in a collaborative manner, and just wanted to express my gratitude. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Stephen Parker from Monmouth Junction, former board member. First of all, I want to say thank you to Scott for his service in this district. It was certainly a pleasure working with you when I served on this board. And congratulations to David for your movement into the interim. I'm certain you will do well. Congratulations to Mr. Nathanson and his election to the board, and to thank you to this board for the opportunity to interview. South Brunswick is a wonderfully diverse community, and that diversity is shown on this board. Unfortunately, there's been some dis... Unfortunately, there's been some discord on this board lately. Boards work best when they work as a unit and as a whole. It can be difficult to find a superintendent to come into a district where there is discord on the board. Having sat in your seat, Madam President, for five years, I believe it is your responsibility to sort this out. And I wish you all the best on finding a new superintendent. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Any other comments from the public?
Not seeing any.
No, I think Barry's coming in. Okay, so without seeing any more, we will close this portion of our public comment. And I will need, is he coming up? Okay, you guys are confusing me over here. Stop talking. We have to adjourn to another executive session. So be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Township of South Brunswick hereby moves into executive session in accordance with the Sunshine Law, Chapter 231 of the Public Laws of 1975, NJSA 104-21, to discuss the following personnel matters. Okay, be it further resolved that the discussion conducted in executive session can be disclosed to the public at such time as the matters have been resolved. Further action may be taken at any meeting. Please note that the next scheduled Board of Education meeting is set for Thursday, August 21st, 2025, at 7:00. Can I have a motion to adjourn to executive session? Mr. Sony, Mr. Mitchell, second it. All in favor? Okay, good night, South Brunswick.